Late county board meeting went a little over and we had technical difficulties, but I am going to call this meeting to order at 1:42 PM. And affirmation of proper, proper public notice. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Audience to visitors. Put anyone in. All right, now. Audience.
Oh, did I give that? No, I didn't give you that. Okay. My bad. Sorry, blew up.
All right. I'm gonna try again, please. Audience to visitors. Anybody care to make a comment? One more time or two more times because I don't think people were listening. Audience to visitors. Anyone care to make a comment? Audience to visitors. Okay. So, regular business, we're here today to talk about the county farm contract approval. I was not at last gen gov meeting, so I'm gonna do my best to follow along, but I am also gonna apologize if I have questions to help bring me along. So, who wants to?
Also, who's not?
Um, who's like, who's, who are visitors there?
Uh huh.
Oh, visitors, should I introduce yourself? Mary would like to know.
This is Munch.
Yeah. Jim Munch. And he's a grazing specialist. I'm grazing specialist. I feel like Charlie McCarthy.
Actually, in the watershed, he was my person on my bus.
Tour guide.
Tour guide.
We had the big 90th anniversary of the concrete watershed.
Oh, that's okay.
Yeah.
You, sir.
Chad Erickson, I am lead farm on Rush Creek Watershed Group and also secretary on Hill Country Alliance Watershed. I was just coming to see if you guys had any questions they could help answer.
Great. I think everyone else on mine, no. Okay. So, together is a farm lease agreement. Who would like to talk about? My understanding when we left is we were doing a one-year lease agreement and then kind of building on to bigger project plans for the following year, but if I'm off on that, I'd just like to know.
Um, I didn't understand it that way. Nobody's gonna want to bid on this for a one-year lease.
Okay, then, I guess I, I thought that's what we had talked about at the la, not last gen gov meeting, but the gen gov meeting before.
I could do these. I thought you drafted that one, and we were just talking about the other one, didn't I?
The one?
Yeah. That one's down and after per the direction of the committee.
Right. Correct.
So, this is for, beyond that, this is more for me, I'm sorry, to get caught up, and I realize I missed, but I still need to be caught up.
I guess I have a difference of opinion because I think at the meeting, I said, we couldn't really make a determination on what to do with the lease until we knew what we were gonna do with it. And there was no decision about what we were gonna do with it, so there's no lease been, proof that I recall. No.
So, from my recollection, the direction, I don't know if that was voted on or just consensus, was to extend for one year because you were requesting additional information to help with a longer plan.
I agree and concur, and I tell ya, I had to go back, and if you guys recall, this was, this came from the August 1st and 2nd, 2nd and 3rd, 4th and 5th, whatever those two back-to-back dates, that first week of August were, I was returning from out of state, flew overnight, I did try to log in for that first meeting, first day of the two-day meeting. That was when most of this discussion had transpired, and I wasn't able, tech issues and probably lack of sleep combined, user errors, wasn't able to actually access and get on, so I was at the second meeting. And so, I reviewed it online. I had to listen to the meeting three separate times to figure out what the heck y'all actually decided ultimately. My takeaway after reviewing that was consistent with what Ben just summarized.
And I think at the last meeting when we discussed this, you gave us that same information. You had said then that you could see how anyone who sat at the meeting could come away with a different opinion on it. On what actually happened.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing with that. That's why I had to listen to it three times.
And that's why, I'm saying, I don't know that I ever agreed to a one-year lease on it.
You didn't vote on that.
No.
You didn't vote on it, I sat in on it. You wanted more information per acre. What this, this option showed, what this option showed, from our committee of land and education. The vision for that land from our group is to showcase diversity on those plots and use it as a learning tool to help farmers transition because of our watershed issue. And we, our thought is on our committee, we don't want farmers going by it saying, well, this is what they're doing, what's wrong with what I'm doing? So, we're trying to show the best options in land conservation for our area to preserve it. Is that correct, then? That's what our committee's thought is.
Yeah, you got it. I don't agree.
So, my purpose was just to get caught up. It sounds like, and I, you're right, we didn't vote on it. We directionally had said that we can't get all this information and have a lease ready for people coming up on our October deadline, and so, that was my understanding. It sounds like something shifted at the last meeting, so.
Mary had a lot of questions, and she just.
Well, I said, if we don't have any financials on anything, I would ask for them for four months.
Okay, let's, let's break down West Farm. Okay where it is right now with the land conservation improved, right? Now, we're talking about Phil and last month. East Farm, we're not talking about that, just the West Farms. And it's always okay with that project. Get the waterways improved, water shift or whatever, that's okay, but it's a five-year lease.
No, that's what we do in '24, if we want to go there.
I don't think so.
So, before you, I guess before we look at any leases, why don't we allow Phil the opportunity to share his information about what he has looked at in terms of both farms and what he's seeing there.
Okay. Um, don't pay a lot of attention to the acreage numbers, um, because I just went off the contract, existing contract, I know there's been land taken out, uh, so not getting into the whole, um, issue of how many acres there actually is, uh, the math will stay the same. Before, during, and after the multiple meetings, I've had countless people call, um, requesting information and why we're considering doing what we're considering doing and why we don't do this. So, um, all these numbers, except the 2022 rate, is estimated, um, so take that for what it is, but this whole conversation came about, um, when the end of the contract come into play, and my concerns about the erosion areas on the county farm, especially on the East Farm, to the east of the Highway Shop, so I asked the committee to consider options, um, to help alleviate that. The, the waterways have been narrowed up over the years, um, and not a lot of maintenance has been done, done on the waterways or the county farm in general, um, in the last 15, 18 years. So, now is the opportunity to, to try it, or to do that renovations, if you want to call it that. So, that brought up the conversation of what to do, um, with it, and I just put a couple of options in here, like I say, take them for what they're worth, but, um, just using the GIS map, I didn't measure any land, all the above, um, taking certain areas out of row crop production, um, that I feel, um, have some erosion issues. One, I see it on a daily basis out at the Highway Shop, and two, I see where renters are working with, uh, skid steers fixing ruts, um, in the field, and I see where top soil is running across the bike trail and that sort of thing. Um, so, and I'm using these numbers just purely for, obviously, they can be modified, but just to give you a number point of view, that if you took approximately 30 acres out of row crop on both East and West Farm, seeded down, um, you'll see, I have 2022 rented acres, if them acres are accurate, I know that's what they paid for rent, um, and that's the income for the county farm, um, at the $99,000 and change. If you took the 30 acres out, um, established the waterways, um, better, um, planted number of areas with whether grass, alfalfa, whatever you wanted to plant, um, that's the 2024 rented acre section, um, you know, gives you just an idea of possibly, I'm guessing what the rent would be next year. I've talked to multiple farmers, corn farmers, hay farmers, dairy farmers, all the above, um, they're all confident that, uh, we would get that much money for it, um, if we took so much out of production and did that. Um, that remains to be seen till we get it out there. Um, I had a couple of dairy farmers contact me, um, expressing, wondering why we don't strip it like we used to, um, you know, with the contour strips, so on and so forth. I won't go down that road again, but option two, and once again, I'm just shooting numbers out there, I got more aggressive, um, put it in that it would be alfalfa, not just a buffer-type grass to stop the erosion, um, I'm very confident that we would get that 225 an acre, um, regardless of what we put in there, if we put alfalfa in there and have a long enough contract to justify, um, putting the cost, um, for the people to seed it down to alfalfa. The option three, um, and I got in there that there's programs out there to help pay for this stuff, I don't know what of them programs are in effect, um, but I did talk to a fencing contractor, um, I took the numbers for the water line, um, I didn't know if we were gonna have a winter grazing or a winter storage or whatever there, so I put a heated water in there, um, to get the estimate for a cost of a water line, um, with electricity to get it to the water, um, guessed at 80 acres, um, on that one corner of the East Farm. Not a lot of people know, there's actually 38, 39 acres on the other side of the road that technically go with the East Farm, um, that's along that property, uh, to the east of the Highway Salt Shed. Um, I took in the account that if we seeded that down, obviously, we, because people asked, we would lose a little money, um, from the revenue that that ground wouldn't get in rent, and, uh, the cost of the perimeter fence, water line, um, and the estimate on to seed it down grass seed. Um, that's a general grass seed, I know there's some high-tech stuff, I have no idea what they cost, that if you're gonna graze it for a long period of time, um, it's much more, uh, long-term grass, um, handles the cattle better, so on and so forth. So, these are all purely estimates. Um, and then, I say, on the back, um, you know, I just, uh, to me, we have to decide on what farming practice we want to put into place. Um, once we decide that, then we can sit down and work out the terms of the contract, um, and define that on how we want it farmed, regardless of what we do with the East Farm, um, whether we rent it separately or we rent them together. If you're gonna focus on crop farming, obviously, if you rent them together, you're gonna get more money because it's a bigger chunk of land in one spot. If you're gonna do one pasture in one farm, row crop, uh, alfalfa in the other farm, then I think as a whole, they should be separated completely, um, you know, and because there's gonna be two different groups, possibly, bidding on it. Um, I know there are some big farmers that also graze, um, most farmers now seem to have beef, um, as well, or some affiliation with, uh, dairy industry, um, for renting their forage crops. Um, this is just conversation starter, say, the big thing I said is to decide which path we want to take. Um, this Ben brought up to me at past contract negotiations, not negotiations, but this has been talked about since I've been in this position, of different options of what we could do. Um, it always turned to the revenue stream was the, of the largest importance. That's, that's the committee's decision, um, but we're at a time right now where I think we can do a substantial revenue stream, um, and still change our practices, because I think the, the want is out there, the need is definitely out there, um, especially for the, to me, the conservation practice that we never should have went away from, of the contour strips, um, buffers, alfalfa, whatever, um, there's enough, uh, big dairies, close enough now, where we're gonna get, uh, good bids, I think these numbers I got on the paper are actually low, um, just the word on the street, but until you put it out for bid and you have, have the contract edge that people can look at, you have no idea what numbers you're gonna get.
Dan?
I'd like to hear from our grazing professionals here about their, uh, experience with grazing grass.
Jim, you know, this is really a great start. Um, the, uh, right now, there are about four or five options to make money through renting land to grazers. One is dairy heifers, that the, what's happened in the dairy industry is these big CAFOs, you know, like Millsna and others, are, they're so pushed for land that they've farmed out the raising of heifers. And by farmed out, a lot of them have gone all the way to Nebraska to have their heifers grazed. It costs them about $3 per head per day, per animal unit, which is about the size of a whole-skinned heifer. And so, that is a high-level income opportunity. You, they wouldn't pay $3 per head, per day here, but they might pay two and save one, and transportation to Nebraska and back, and Nebraska's in a drought. And I say that through small words because we're in a drought. But, but there is an opportunity. Already in the county, there are a couple people doing this at a little bit less income per acre, per head per day, uh, you know, we've been out to pasture walks and seen some of these guys. Um, it does take infrastructure, and your number is exactly right, I think equip would be, Ben, don't you think, an equip would be the way to get that done?
I, I don't, couple things on the cost share, I do believe that we could use MDD money, multi-discharge variance, I have more flexibility of to cover maybe half of it.
Okay.
With equip, they will not do it with the county.
Okay.
But they will do it with any renter, so once a renter had a long-term lease, and we know equip is gonna have more money than they could ever possibly.
They will put in perimeter fence. Uh, that's part of their program.
So, that has definitely.
Get out of your pocket.
Changed back and forth many times in the last 15 years, and I do think.
Currently, like last year, all perimeter fence will not be equipped funded.
But I talk, I'd say, I'd talk all just times, because I have somebody who's looking at this, and they said that it would be covered if it had been crop land.
They like to convert to crop land, they, we won't pay for it on existing pasture, is that maybe?
We'd have to check that out.
Just, I know, I asked Ben, there's no funding for cylinder fencing, I also know there's no funding for certain types of things.
Chris is going to grab you.
So, anyway, there's ways to get the infrastructure, and it, and it's a big expense, that's something you have to overcome.
And like I said, I do believe I have flexible funding, probably for approximately half of this cost.
However, there is a, to me, a, a soil-saving aspect to this, and we have programs at the university now, including SNAP+. But a new program where we could predict how much soil you could save by going from row crops to managed pasture, or row crops to perennial, perennial forage, and sell the forage off. So, so it could be a couple of different uses. Part of it on particularly fragile land could be pastured, and that would be the best from an erosion and a phosphorus loss standpoint. And then, a little bit less fragile land could be in a long-term alfalfa rotation, and that is incredibly sellable right now. We have whole farms over in Valley that Millsna up in, uh, Bellows, actually harvest, and, and so, you know, those contracts are easy to get. So, what I think would be clever, might be to take a map of the thing and run it through SNAP+ with contours, well, with row crops, no till, whole thing. Contours, whole thing, and then a mix of cropping perennial hay and pasture, and I think you can, you can get the phos, down dramatically, and to your point, that would be a, a showcase of viable agricultural practices for this county. You know, somebody could say, I can do that on my farm.
Right, and there are ways to quantify soil loss.
Absolutely.
Financially.
Yes.
And so, that's one thing that might be a little intangible, but could become more tangible.
Right.
As well as the flood mitigation aspects of doing these practices, like, for example, we have a dam that is just below the newly developed portions of the county farm, that dam was at capacity before the sheriff's department and the quick trip and those things existed there now.
So, there is.
It's a flood event, I mean, so there's very tangible financial aspects as well, and that are not on this sheet of paper.
Right.
But are.
This is a great start.
This is an excellent start.
But, but it, but, you know, and I think you could get somebody, including myself, to do this and not have to pay for it. I think Valley Stewardship Network, for instance, would pay for my time, or the university.
Mary, did you have something?
I guess what you're talking about is what we asked for four months ago, and we didn't get the financials, and so, this is the first of what we're getting, but now we're four months down the road.
Wait, where?
Last meeting I was at.
Four months. Because we have. The first time I asked for it.
Months ago.
The very first time the idea was presented, I asked.
No, we asked.
Ben, you heard it, the first meeting.
But I'm saying, as part of the Watershed Groups, now, this is the first we've heard of it. So, BSN wasn't aware of it until yesterday at 4:00. There wasn't anything related to anyone outside of this room.
So, August meeting, I thought we asked for.
We asked for this way back in April when we first talked about. Very first time it was presented. Yes, we did. And so, I think Phil's done a good job with what he's put together at this point in time.
That true. But April, that's not true, and that is just simply not true. We started opening the discussion of how we wanted to change our lease in April, but coming from like, we're gonna change a conservation model, we weren't talking about that in April. I'm not saying like, maybe numbers haven't come as fast, but certainly wasn't back in April. I just don't think that's totally fair.
And I also think when I had to listen to a meeting three times over to figure out what the takeaway of the meeting was, it's unfair to then hold folks accountable for not providing information, um, purportedly requested there, and, and prior to that August meeting, there wasn't that request for data that's being requested today.
I, I disagree. We did ask for that.
You didn't, I was there.
I've asked for financials every time it's been discussed.
And well, I must have missed it because I've been attending these meetings and then coming back to our committee, so I missed it, and I, but I heard it this last time, Mary, I heard it very clearly.
I heard it the last time.
Yes.
Flexible on the term, instead of going.
I agree with her. Five or three, go with the one-year step.
Well, that's a better.
This is the biggest reason that we said, extend for one year, so that more of this time, like, instead of.
That's right.
Instead of the county trying to come up with 75 grand, I would have time to come up with some of it.
That's right. That is absolutely right.
Well, because our committee's working on this, and if we would have been asked, you know, and maybe it was thought about, talked somewhere else, but I don't think as a committee as a whole, because I would have brought it back to our committee, that we need to have more financials, because we were talking about, how do we want to use it, what's the best way to do it? So, I don't think we had that, Mary, in April yet, because we were still talking about, what do we want to do with this, and we needed more time to figure out.
I would, I mean, we know how long whole farm planning takes, and I never would have pretended that we were gonna come up with an entire whole farm plan in two months.
No.
It started with initial ideas, presenting some ideas, presenting some options, then I was asked to find some financials.
But I know at some of these meetings, we said, what do you think about doing three options or whatever? That I know happened, but I still don't think the money part of the financial came into it. We were just looking for the okay to look at something different.
Correct.
But maybe it was a misunderstanding.
I disagree.
But, but the, the value of this that we have here is that you've actually gone out, you've fumbled the market, you've actually talked to people who would be willing to rent land for various purposes. That's huge.
And what part of this conversation came from is that a number of the options with the seeding, um, and the alfalfa and that, they're not gonna do it for one year.
Right.
You know, they'll, they'll jump in on the seeding thing, and I had one guy said, I'll see the whole damn thing if you want, but he said it's gonna be a 10-year contract.
Right.
Um, you know, I said, well, I don't see that happening, but he said.
Because they're putting perennials, they're putting perennials down with a big amount of cost.
Um, you know, and then eventually, he would rotate it and get into row crop and then have that rotation, um, going, whatever, obviously, he didn't tell me how much he could pay us for that, but, uh, the one-year option, I went and asked some people, hey, wanna do it for a year and do this seeding and they're.
And we just talked about that at our meeting, that this has to be longer than a one-year commitment because of the. So, I know those didn't happen in April because we just had those conversations.
Over here now.
Okay.
Right.
Mary, do you have something?
Well, I, I think one of our issues is, you know, what is our real purpose? Uh, uh, you know, first of all, are we here to take this piece of property that the county owns and, and use it to our best source of revenue, um, which requires the least input? Um, or are we here to, you know, showcase? I don't know that we need to showcase anything, we have several kinds of agriculture that work very well in this county. I happen to have raised cattle all of my life on my farm, and I have row cropped all my life on my farm, and, um, I can tell you many different scenarios. I know where I make my most money, but it's not on grazing.
So, I do want to remind this committee that when this whole thing started, and Lauren was here, he said, he, he introduced this concept that if we have a conservation department and we have farming practices that we should utilize some of our land to illustrate the best way to do that, that, and, and I also remember our conservation is saying, look, I'll go do this work if we're actually committed to taking on this type of model, and so, we can debate whether the work came in in the time that you wanted to, but that, I mean, he was sitting right here saying, please don't make me do all this research if at the end, it's all gonna come down to what's gonna make the county the most money.
So, right.
I am the only one who can, does anyone else recall that happening in this meeting? Because that absolutely happened.
Yep.
So, now, here we are with the.
Because we thought of it.
So, if you're asking the committee members, and I'll ask the committee members, to me, I think you accomplished both. You can get money, which Phil actually outlined, and you can illustrate a proper way to do it. I've said a million times, I'm not a farmer, you all are, but you can also have two, two principles at play and accomplish the same goal. And I just wanted to remind that our conservationist said, please don't make me do this work, and at the very end, you're just gonna say it's all about the money.
But it is not all about the money, it's about.
That's what you just said.
Well, you're, you're acting like it's all about the money, but it's not, because the other thing we have to say is, how much time do we want to involve in all this? I mean, we already are over, I mean, we have a big problem with finances and, and people that we hire and, and.
Separation.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
Not if we're going to say to people, you have to put hours into this, because you're not gonna build fences, you're not gonna do all this thing and not have input and hours in it, and who is gonna get the call when the cattle are on the road?
The person with the lease.
Yeah.
I got that call yesterday.
Well, I didn't. And I'm, I've got several calls of people who are not at all interested in, in grazing this. They said we should just sell it then.
Who are they? We haven't even brought this out to.
Well, I'm just saying, in everybody's work here, we've all had different things. I've had many calls too.
You're a great guy. That pumpkin in my mouth, let him talk, let him talk about his grazing experience.
Oh, lots.
Honestly, I don't agree with any of it, I think it's a bad idea.
Okay.
You guys want to save soil, that's, that's what Phil started with, we're trying to cut down on erosion, you guys don't want to put the money into it, don't put the fence up, just go with some different practices, maybe, go with like a perennial headland, so they don't have hedgerows anymore, so you don't have hedgerows running up and down the hill, go with second action strip, grass, prairie, buffer, whatever name you want to call, put in like. Put in like a 60 or 90 foot wide strip in the middle of the hill to slow the water down, give it a water break. As far as for minimum effort and trying to save soil, the easiest way is to leave it in row crop and, and just leave it there. As far as for grazing, Jim, I know we, we push it, but I don't know if this is the right way to do it. The university wants to do it, let them build it. Let them charge kids tuition to chase cattle.
Well, I'm not.
If we're going to lease it out, you know, and you said Millsna, that's great. Who's to say that's going to work out? And all of a sudden Jim gets a better deal on a feedlot, pulls out the contract, the guy that has it rented now has no income coming in. How, you know, it, it's a lot of risk we're putting out.
Yeah. So I'm not questioning, raising. I'm not, I'm not an advocate of it, but I am an advocate of saving soil.
Right.
And it's all financial. The soil is your asset.
Um, don't tell me I know this.
I don't.
I'm not lecturing you. I know you know this. If you farm, you know this or should. Because eventually the soil is going to peter out. It happened from 1840 to 1880.
Horrible.
You know, we know this, it's history. If you're only going to save soil, I would tend to agree with you. But you're going to lose some income acres if you're going to save soil. You're going to put buffer strips in, you're going to widen out the, the waterways. You're going to insist that the operator not plant up and down any hills, which means that headlands are probably going to have to be in, in forage. I mean, there is a way to save soil and grow row crops, no problem. And it's probably the least sleep inducing for anybody in the county board. They don't have to, like you say, maintain everything.
Right.
But, but you're going to, you're going to lose some land. Because some of the land, I don't know the county farms, but some of the land is probably highly erodible land.
Well, I'm sure you're going to run into with the runoff from buildings and, you know.
You got to deal with it.
Lots, you're going to have waterway issues there, which maybe that's something to end up redoing some waterways instead. I don't know.
And, and use science and technology. We've got all the tools to figure out how much erosion you can have with different farm practices.
Mm-hmm.
And we've got combines now that'll tell you instantaneously what yield you have.
I know I own ones.
You'll find that headlands, headlands and areas against woods.
Oh, yeah, terrible.
They're horrible. So we do something else with it. That is a showcase all by itself.
Mm-hmm.
If we could, because there are a lot of farmers doing no till that don't do that.
It's not truly no till. I, I agree totally. It makes me angry. They call it no till, but it's not.
It's exactly.
Mm-hmm. So that's, I'm just thinking, what's the easiest thing we can do and yet maintain the land?
That was not what I was directed to.
Well.
The easiest is not what we had talked. So I had talked of an example of managed grazing, an example of prairie strips, an example of tree planting, an example with contour strips.
Mm-hmm.
And this committee said, yes, do some of all of that. That's absolutely what the direction was.
Looked at it.
Yep.
And I just, I don't think it's worth our time to do this.
Dave?
So I have a 200 acre farm that, uh, has about half of it is highly erodible. And that's all in past that I rent out. And I have sold alfalfa, $500 an acre for the season, three cutting. So you're right, not this year. It is, I put up my own, but, uh, I have to build alfalfa standing and they harvested and gave me $500 an acre.
She's fertilizer bill.
So, uh, we had a couple hundred dollar startup cost to get that alfalfa going. But, uh, it's a pretty good income source. Um, the, the pastoring is, uh, going well. Even the valley, uh, the clovers are keeping us going this year, a wait. I just think it would be, uh, a real exciting change for that land though.
Are you using exciting as a positive metaphor? Okay, I'm sorry, it was hard to translate. Um, wait, hang on a second. Ollie, did you have anything? Okay, Mary did.
I don't have anything to say.
Okay.
I just want to say, and this has bugged me a lot, and it's my own relative that does it. Yeah, we're talking about, we can rent this, you know, Millsna will come down or whoever, you know. We're taking forage and we're running it on roads in these huge trucks, um, for miles and miles. It takes a huge amount of petroleum. If you really figured out, that is not good for the environment. When you say, oh, we'll rent it out to this guy who's 20 miles away, that is not the best use of the land.
Would crops be any different?
You don't run constantly with crops. You know what? My crop leaves one time a year. It doesn't go up and down the road six times in big alfalfa crops.
But you have field operations.
Yeah.
That all need to travel there throughout the season. I just think when we're comparing.
Where?
Well, you used the example of 20 miles. So let's say 20 miles or whatever distance.
Mine never leave.
We're not talking about your farm, we're talking about the county farm. So I'm just saying, I mean, yes, forage or.
But what I'm saying is that's the best use. You have to look at all of what happens with that.
So for us, like Jim is saying, it's, it's the soil bank. That's a value to the county. So he said, you know, so perennial forage undeniably holds the soil more than crop land. That's not even debatable, really. Like to build your soil, perennial forage is good, better than crops. To truly build your soil, manage grazing is better than perennial forage. That is undeniable. We can prove that. So we can talk about roads and carbon footprint, but I feel like that's absolutely a different topic.
No, I don't.
Getting beyond revenue and the benefits to the county and using it as an example, I think we.
I just really have a hard time with how we.
But you've taken us out of, let's make the most money for the, for the county.
But I'm just saying, this is all the things.
I mean, I can.
When you look at real estate and you look at money and income.
Logical benefits, but they're very hard to quantify. And they shouldn't be, I don't think they should.
I'm just saying, it's my opinion.
Okay, so. Okay. So where do we go from here? I mean, I think that. I think we are going down a bit of a road of bringing other thing, other factors into what we're trying to decide here today. So I'm just trying to kind of like bring us back together.
When do we really have a contract?
Is it in October?
That's what, what the urgency was with why exactly I already drafted the West Farm contract for one-year term was I was told I better have it ready by like, I think it was the last meeting, that maybe it was this one. I don't recall for sure, but. Were we, no.
You did.
It's from the last time.
It's much to try.
April 6th. Yes, we did look at that.
That's right, that's right. And that, that's right, that's right. But it's done.
Of the year of the contract.
Per instruction, you're welcome, although I think our.
Okay, so what, this is saying April 1? I don't know where October came in, but.
We also had the same discussion at the last meeting when we talked about the October 1 deadline. And I said, you didn't sign the last contract until April 1 of the year that they were going to put the crops in. And that October 1 allows potential tenants an opportunity to plan, get their money, the whole gamut. However, we are not absolutely governed by an October 1 deadline.
I like it.
I, I don't, the only October 1 relevance was to provide notice to Tim or not, which we did. And we had discussed how it wasn't required, but it was certainly good courtesy on your practice. And so I just did that. That was the October 1 relevance.
Yes, it requires an open mindedness from corn and beans, corn and bean, beans and corn, a different concept that has worked well for me.
Well, it's worked well for me too, we're more than corn.
That's what has to be answered.
But it's.
Okay, well, well, I don't understand then what you're saying. It, the October relevance was notification, so where?
No, the, the comment here was we needed to do this contract. We need to get this lease agreement now so that we can get it out by October 1. Well, that's not all true.
Okay.
No, it wasn't to get it out by October 1. I'm sorry if that was the takeaway.
That might have been my mistake.
Um, but it was to get it out ASAP. There wasn't a date associated with that, but I know that there was talk, um, about getting it out in the fall to have time or getting it approved by now to have time to get it out in the fall to get the bids in, in time for folks to start preparing and planning.
I do recall that. I do recall that.
I mean, truly, that's why it was triaged on my to do's. That's why I recall it, because it was.
While we're having a special meeting, right?
But you could tell us why we're having a special meeting.
Right.
Maybe we could go one-year extension.
I don't think you can do one.
I thought that was closer to what the consensus was in this meeting. A one-year extension or a one, really a one-year.
Continue it.
I thought we were talking, everything had to be a minimum of two. And then to give it more times, we had more time to investigate some.
Depends on, you know, a lot of discussion going on today. Phil did a great job. Your input is good and stuff, but we can't decide that within a month or two. We've got to, we're going into next year.
Mm-hmm.
Plan this. And then after that, it takes a couple.
So are you suggesting like extending the current contract by a year? Is that what you just said? I'm trying to get clarity, because I saw that in your head.
Do that with the bidding and the.
Okay, so that's not.
Non-option to offer an extension unilaterally to one individual right now.
Okay.
No.
Trying to say that, but then we're off.
I'm sorry. I know, I can, I, I agree with the logic, but I don't think it's appropriate to do, given we're the county and the way we have historically put our property out for leases. It would be unfair to just go to this one individual and say, we're just going to give it to you for one year.
Yeah, I, I thought we talked about going to two years, even on the.
Well, I, that could be. His, his suggestion was to buy us more time with the current renter, which makes sense, but legally it doesn't sound like that would, would work. And Phil, you were shaking your head.
It's just, and that's, it was because of that, we can't just say, hey, you want to do it for another year? We'll follow square. Um, that's not the way it's been done in the past. But my argument with that was, and I've said it at multiple meetings, if you just did a one-year, I mean, you extended it, which we don't, shouldn't do, we're not going to get the erodible areas fixed. And that's what this whole conversation was, is that how much? And the reason I put multiple acres in, I mean, don't get me wrong, I'd have no problem seeing nice stretch prairie grass going right down the middle of that bad boy. But to get people, if we're talking about financing and revenue, to get people to throw a big number at it, they could care less how much prairie grass is out there. They're going to see alfalfa about yay tall, and then they'll throw a big number at it, as Dave stated, um, because they need it for feed. So that was my, uh, can't think of the word, but why I was in a big grip to get it done, because the sooner we get this out, the sooner the word gets out, the sooner the people that say, hey, yeah, I'm milking 2,400 cows, I'm 800 acres short of alfalfa, I better get a piece of that. Um, you know, so there's that happy medium. And then I get my erosion problem fixed, um, because we can designate, um, through professional help, if this has to be alfalfa, this has to be alfalfa. And if you want to plant another 100 acres alfalfa, and you, you, you plant whatever you want, based on what you want to pay and what you want to bid. So that person that bids it, to me, if you want true options, and if we designate a farm for pasture, great. If we don't, that's fine. But I think you ought to give the option that all the people at this table are going to bid on this farm. You put in a bid, I'll give you 250 acres, I'll put half of it in alfalfa, I'll put 10% of it in prairie grass, and I'll do the other 40% in row crops. And we can make that decision based on that. To give people the option to tell us what they're willing to do, or you designate exactly what you want.
Okay, Mary, bring.
All I know is the price is putting in alfalfa and establishing it, you're not going to get anybody to do it for two years.
You're not going to get anybody for two years. If you don't do it for five years, nobody's going to throw their name in the ring.
Okay.
So we would have to take that on ourselves to see these highly, in my opinion, erodible areas and erosion problems. So then there again, you're investing money in it, which I'm, I'm, I'm probably going to do in the spring anyway, because I'm tired of all the dirt watching down that ditch. And I've got a ditch that big with in excess of $15,000 to $18,000 of rip rap in it to trying to stop the erosion into the pond at the highway shop. Um, and we're fixing it. I mean, I don't want me to be rude or blunt or disrespectful, but that's getting fixed next spring. Um, if I got to hire somebody at the highway shop to do it, so we, but we can't have them ditches that deep, um, especially on a county farm.
Could you hive off those kinds of areas?
Interesting.
And, and make a one-year lease or a two-year lease, whatever. I mean, I'm kind of on the board, so it's not my to say, hive those off and fix them.
And that's kind of what we're talking about, that we'd have to take that extra acreage out because it needs to be.
Which you've already done.
Which it's done.
Right, and, and it's, the market is such right now where I think we could get somebody to pay us to do it. You know, um, to put them areas in, because they're not going to plant, you know, the, the head strips and on them erodible areas. They know they have to put in a percentage alfalfa or grass mix. They're going to do it in them spots, the, the spot where they have to back the planter in.
Right.
To get a row set and go, we're going to put that in alfalfa. Um, you know, around them wood islands, around the rocky knobs out on there. They're going to plant them alfalfa and they're going to have that nice big flat straight stuff they're going to put in row crops.
Would be option two.
Mary. Um. Whether it's alfalfa, whether it's row crops, one of the things that's been missing in our contracts over time is, um, figuring out what's been put back into the soil or into the soil by the farmers. And if it's alfalfa, it's going to need some intent and, and they take off the crops when you're talking about the kind of people that are going to want those crops. They need to feed that really well.
Yes.
And that adds to the cost. And so a one or a two-year contract just isn't going to cut it. And you need to have at least a four-year contract so that you can pro-rate those costs for that farmer over four years, five years possibly. But then again, at the end, you're, if you haven't decided that you're going to reinvest in alfalfa again, you're going to have to be planting again and you're going to have kind of a dead first year compared to in the past, based on when crops come off. So be prepared for that, but a one and two-year contract isn't going to work for that.
I agree completely with that. I think the one-year in that discussion was just to get it to a better farm plan. I absolutely am supportive of long-term leases to, to get alfalfa for it to be lined, for it to be fertilized where it needs. I'm 100% in agreement. I, my understanding is we are just looking for some kind of stopgap solution. Like if you want help paying for grass waterways or any of these other things to establish, that's all going to take time, even that, even without the managed grazing. Um. If you're ready to do a five-year lease, make them covered in alfalfa. That sounds just fine to me. Be easy. Have them just require your alfalfa for five years. I'm cool with that.
To your point, the Millsna, for instance, when they rent land, they, they provide the nutrients.
Well, usually that's the way it goes, yeah.
Yeah.
But you have to.
But our contract hasn't done that in the past.
It's been in there, but it hasn't been filed.
Okay, so committee, let's regroup a little bit. It sounds like there's enough consensus that a one to two-year is not going, is not meaningful lease, won't attract people. In reading the lease agreement, it does look like conservation efforts, uh, to hold tenants accountable have been put in place. Now, as we all know, everything looks good on paper, but somehow we have to hold them accountable.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Why haven't we? I don't know, I just got on this, I've never dealt with it before.
They're good farmers, don't worry about it.
But I think.
I'm not making it up.
You know.
Not testing the buck. From our perspective, they should be required to have a nutrient management thing.
That's right.
Soil testing every four years, and there does need to be teeth if they're.
And it's.
It's just that we're going to.
It's in the contract.
Okay.
It's never been.
If I'm given the authority to, I would, Ollie.
Okay, so. Okay, so seen as this is new to many of us, I think there's, if there's one consensus that I do hear is everybody feels that the enforcement of what is written in our contract should be utilized. Yes?
That, that only addresses, um, the soil testing. It doesn't, I don't, I'd have to look again, but I don't think it requires them to fertilize at a certain level to maintain a pH of 62 to 67 at all. For.
In the existing contract.
Soil sample covers pH and nutrient.
I understand that, but when you put a crop in, you are to apply, you apply fertilizer or you apply phosphorus, um, and potassium. And usually it's based on what you're planning to produce. And if you don't put it on at that level, that takes it out of the soil. So there needs to be something included in there so that whatever purpose it's used for, the appropriate level is put in there, um, so that all of your levels, pH, phosphorus, potassium are kept at the appropriate level.
So I think language in here could be kind of complimented the nutrient management.
Yes.
Would say, require nutrient management and soil testing every four years. And by the end of the lease, um, nutrient levels must match.
Can you clarify for me, um, if their farm has a long history of whatever and didn't develop a brand new nutrient management plan when they were supposed to several years ago? They're governed or grandfathered by whatever was there previously. So therefore, if these tenants are coming in here and they've been grandfathered on their previ, on their own properties later, do they have to have a special plan for this one that they follow? Or can they follow based on their previous use?
It should be based on the new land because soil tests make such a difference.
Okay, thank you.
And the history of manure or lack thereof make huge difference on.
I'm sure that ground hasn't seen manure since we had a county farm.
Exactly.
With an active dairy herd.
Exactly.
Which is like 30 years ago at least.
I like manure.
You want somebody to drag like 20,000 gallons an acre per acre and then you want to deal with everyone in city limits?
Yeah, that is a potential issue.
I don't think anything in this current lease prevents that. Like crop farmers, if they could get a good price on manure, we wouldn't have been able to stop them if they had chosen to do that. And I, I just know it's better for the soil. I would be okay with that.
Organic farming stands for lots of reasons.
We have to, organic, every year we get research. And we show that certifier went on, what went on every acre and we have to.
Yes.
We have to have, um, seed tags to prove it. It wouldn't be, uh, so difficult to have a farmer approve what he's put on that land.
Well, that's, that's one of the things that I said is not in the contract that we should have.
So is that, are you wanting to modify what's written with that?
Oh, there, there will be many things that I think should be included in this, but I'm not.
Early draft.
I'm not through the lease yet because I, I thought I'm not, I, I spent some time on it. I shared my thoughts with Phil, but that was only quick beginning thoughts. I'm not going to go there until we decide what option we think we're going to recommend.
I agree with that.
Okay.
I like option five years. I bet it.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
What?
Okay, so Dave, you, on the county farm lease, you have put a motion out to do option two, which is east farm, 100 acres, row crop, 34 acres alfalfa at 225.
Well, I got it. It's bid. I just looked at that number in your.
You're, okay. But is that, is, I'm making sure I'm calling out the option that you just made a motion. Anyone seconding that?
Anyone? Anyone?
First, why is it not closer to 50/50?
I just got numbers. Just, I didn't pick.
A lot of times when you do, do contour strips on a place that's closer to 50/50.
Because we're going to rotate it.
Right.
Over the side.
Because otherwise, like, like you brought up, Mary, when your alfalfa is done, you can't reseed it to alfalfa, alfalfa. So that's why a lot of times you're, you're rotating. So no, if you're truly stripping a farm, it's close to 50% hay and 50%.
Why are we stripping in the day of, I mean, the university says stripping isn't your best.
I have not ever seen that from the university.
Well, I have. Everything you read, they say no till is your best option to not have erosion. And if it's done properly, I.
Everything I read is natural agriculture is absolutely better than it row cropping. There's no doubt, even if it's true.
So I, I've run those.
True, no, it's no.
Mary, I've run those numbers this way. If you, if you put contour strips in and no till the grain in that rotation. So, so you're looking at, in fact, I rent land from a guy who does exactly this. It's corn, one-year corn, one-year beans, three-years.
Alfalfa.
If he, if you no till the, the row crops, don't plow it up, don't chisel. If you, if you, and this is, we can show this from a university and SNAP plus. That is the, if you're going to crop, that is the best from an erosion standpoint. But you no till those crops and you don't use any kind of primary tillage.
Well, of course.
Yeah.
But I mean, truly has to be no till.
But that, you know, we say university, university, you get all kinds of comments for the university. But this is a, a, a program that everybody uses for their nutrient management plan. This SNAP plus program is based on NRCS erosion data.
Okay, so I have a motion from Dave. It sounds like Ben, you had talked about wanting to modify the number.
The practicality of stripping, like how stripping actually plays out on the land. Ask myself this every, every weekend to strip or not to strip. And so that's.
Be the answer.
Looking at.
It depends.
So you want to wait a month?
Okay, so anybody, is anybody going, seconding Dave's motion?
Well, either you or Ollie could say. Help me save the planet.
Okay.
Five-year with the numbers tweaked. Acreage is tweaked.
Strip cropping, doesn't say strip cropping here, but.
It does on the back somewhere.
We're going to tweak it.
It says.
So you.
Option two is just a section for math. If you decide how you want to farm it, if you're going to put it in strips, we put that in the contract. But this is how it has to be done and we could have that for you next month. I just did a little piece of the pie here to give you an example of revenue, how much you make, how much you may not make. Them numbers are floating. I'm not even sure the big numbers are right because I think we took more land off there than the contract says.
Okay, I need clarification as the minute taker, guys. So.
And now.
Are we, we're talking about alfalfa with stripping, correct?
An option.
So motion second discussion?
Yeah. I, I need, I, I need.
But wait, I can see it more. So it's the referencing option two with, but, which is really honing in on five years. There'd be a modification, I was trying to write this down, of acreage based on best practice, right? What else?
Waterways. Well.
Row crop. Again, not my language, trying to form, trying to help.
The motion that you're going to put the farm, the county farm, east and west for five years, um, and contour strips, including forage.
Including forage and necessary waterways.
And I think we're going to end up paying for water with yourself.
Yeah, we're going to have to pay for those waters. We deserve to pay for those waters.
You can't bring any renter and expect them to, no, somebody. So that's why I would put it in the contract that, uh, renter maintains a lot.
Right.
There are jobs to fix.
But if you farm the farm in contour strips with a designated acreage in forage, that would be a motion you could discuss and then you can quantify the numbers and build a contract according.
Got that.
Is that your motion, Dave?
So when, when our grandchildren are going to, are going to think back to on this thing and.
How are we going to put in there about nutrient, nutrient?
Which is already.
I, I have a. A good formulation. Go ahead, Mary.
I have a question about, because I do have kind of a problem with that. Okay, so are we going to require this year that we have to soil? And that should probably be at our expense, that we're going to run a soil sample on those acres.
Well, we got to have a baseline.
So, yeah, we have a baseline. We have to do that. That's part of our.
Yeah, I mean, we probably should have been doing that a lot.
County management plan since it's their farm.
County 10,000 nutrient management.
Land and water have money. So is that a sign for doing nutrient management?
So typically, I mean, either way, you, the farm, it still is the farmer's nutrient management.
It'd be your reference point for the county to maintain. If they're improving, taking out of the farm.
What Nikki has in here now is farmers responsible for the soil sampling and that is what's most common.
That's what, that's what I get.
I need to pause a moment. I would like a motion to excuse Ollie.
Oh, you got to, you got to vote.
I have a great grandson birthday party you go to and I'll probably.
I moved the excuse away.
Can you vote in abstention? Can you leave them written out?
No. We, we're just about there, Ollie.
Ollie, give us a second. I have a question.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, if we're close enough, I, I think, because a lot of this, we're, like we said, the lease is separate. We can still, I want to make sure Mary asks her question though, but didn't you have a question?
No, I, I was just saying that we need to establish what those, um, those acres are right now. Because we can't have, and that's not the renters.
So I guess.
We have to accept that. Okay, so.
But is that separate than the motion on this?
I think.
I think that's part of formulating like the renters agreement. Is that, is that true?
Right.
Ollie, turn around.
I'm, Ollie? Because there's only.
I'm, I'm going to ask this question and that is, um, I know that there was a discussion on contour farming and I'm not opposed to contour farming. That's what I was raised with. Um, however, the question I have is, is that, is that going to be different from contour strips?
Contour strip farming is probably the better term because that makes it clear that you're requiring approximately 50% hay. And, and an alternate, when, if you say contour farming and you don't say contour strip farming, that could mean zero hay, but they're doing their best to follow the contour. So I do think the word strip is valuable if your distinction is to say that you want hay to be on approximately 50% of the landscape.
Okay, so I have a.
And, okay, so.
And I think that should be part of the lease agreement.
Right.
Part of the, adding the max size.
Or can we, is this part of the vote?
Part of it. So.
Try selling that to a 24-row planter.
Right. Right.
Machine and you're going to try to drive it down a 90-foot path.
So what you're doing is you're limiting who can bid on this. Thank you, Ben.
Well, you're going, you're going to do that.
Is that your most common?
Yeah.
Is that your most common? What do you say? In the town?
Okay.
Big on the last beat.
Well, he's like leaving, so what do you want?
I'll vote, uh, yes.
Well.
Well, Mary, still have questions.
Well, you're going to lose out on our.
Well, then that's what happens.
Then we have a tie potentially.
The question. Are we trying to influence votes here?
No.
What? Okay, well, then.
Okay, hang on. Mary, please ask, ask your questions.
Okay, when you talk about limiting potential, um, farms and you talk about the sky, size that, that you're mentioning here, um, how is that actually going to impact what the county is going to get off of this farm in the long run? And you made me forget my second question. But that's my question.
So what do you mean as far as to get, as far as financially, what you're going to get? You're going to take less rent?
Mm-hmm, we're going to take less rent.
Just because of the people with 24-row corn planters don't bid on it, you think you're going to.
Your loss.
Yeah.
Half your guys.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not.
He's right.
But this committee is, I believe stating that that's also important.
If that's the practice we want to go with, I understand it, but it will have an impact.
Historically, in Vernon County, on a Vernon County farm, requiring hay did not reduce rent.
How many people are going to put a pay though? How many people are?
All your big dairies.
I, I.
Now we're down, now we just limited our bids.
Yep, correct.
Because you took out.
Has this been implemented?
Smaller cash crop.
Has this been implemented prior?
It was.
And did it slow down anybody's ability? Did we ever have trouble renting it?
We didn't have equipment the size we do today. Yes.
It, it's.
So are these?
With the conservation practices, you're going to run into implementing them. You're going to have some people who will not put a bid in just because you're telling them how to farm.
Right.
You want the rent to be at the certain level, they are not going to pay to play your case.
Hang on, hang on. I hear that. I hear that, but this committee has said over and over again, most of the time that we want both. We want to have both strong practice in conservation and make some money. So I think that what you're illustrating is what the potential impact is of a decision to feature both.
We will limit to only the renters who want to follow conservation practice.
That was the whole.
That was the whole point of all this.
That was the whole point. It's, as long as we follow conservation.
This priorities list was just a brain, was like a, a brain dump of everything that we had kind of talked about. But we have not, as a committee, actually said, this is every single priority that we're going to adopt or not. Is that a fair statement? So.
Yes.
Right now, that still can be discussed as we move forward.
Yes.
Yes. Yes?
Chad had a comment.
The only thing is by putting in, it has to be hay, it has to be alfalfa, you are taking a lot of potential bidders out. If it was open to two different crops where it wasn't block farming, where everything is one product, corn or beans, where you could say, we're going to implement, you have to do some of each and even break it up. And part of it's in beans, part of it's in corn. That would help with the larger grain producers because, yeah, I know you'll get it rented out either way, but you will limit your income because some of the guys will not do hay and that's fine.
Mm-hmm.
It's, it's what you got to look at.
So how does that change our motion? Does it?
It doesn't.
It doesn't because this is all, this is, that's still part of how we want to formulate the lease.
Yeah.
Right?
If you want a landscape with absolutely no hay, then this whole conversation has been a waste of time. Hay, at least throughout portions of this farm, absolutely necessary to get anywhere near the conservation goals we're discussing. If we wanted to end-to-end crop farming, then we shouldn't have been having this conversation for the last four months. Why didn't that, I thought that clarified, I'm sorry.
That did. I'm frustrated by ourselves.
Okay, thank you.
By my, by, yes.
So in general, I believe the motion is to do contour strip farming. And you all can decide if that's what you want or not. And after that, we can decide the lease agreements, which will include, you know, a maximum length of the contour strip. You just have to, the soil testing so that we make sure they're required to put back what they've taken off. I keep hearing loud and clear and I sure wish was done 15 years ago, but at least we can do it now. Um, I believe the motion is very acceptable and the rest of the agreements, we can, it still needs time, right? We're going to work on the, on the draft to make sure everyone is.
I would like to vote then.
I have still another question.
Okay.
And that is that by limiting other farmers, and you've talked about wanting this to be a showplace as such.
I want it to just be different.
Different, you're not, it's not different. It's taking it back. Why do you say no?
No.
Why do you say no?
We're not going backwards.
Going back to contour strips. It's pretty bad. Is.
No, we're, we're doing what we should be doing, going forward.
According to you.
Yeah.
Conservation practices.
Ultimately, I want to.
Or hold the quality of the land.
I want to get back to the question that I want to ask Chad, and that is, um, if we do that and we limit the people, can't we do the same thing by putting in just the, the waterways and the, the strips that need to be in there? And again, as you said, allow the farmer to choose where they're going to go with what's in there rather than dictating to them? Because the reality is, yep, you got some that need alfalfa now. Two years from now, they may not need alfalfa. You've got the cost for the input of that, which in most cases can be the county. I don't know, am I off, am I not thinking correctly on that or?
No, I'm not. I think it's, it's kind of, it, the, the problem is right now, it seems like we don't exactly know where you guys want to go with this.
Uh-huh.
Because originally, me and Jim were under the impression you guys were talking about putting in pasture. So I mean, and now we're circled back to, we're going to put in some waterways and, and possibly seed in something else, you know, whether it's alfalfa or whatever to, to, to reduce erosion. So I mean, I guess the thing is, I, it'd be easier to understand if you guys had a better plan. And, and with putting in part of it into alfalfa or grass stripping, it, it's still a sellable product. But it's always, as long as you're telling them what they can and can't do, you're always going to limit your number of bidders.
Sure.
That's unfortunately, it, it just works that way because there's producers that are at the age that don't have the equipment. They're not going to go buy a piece of equipment, you know, it just doesn't make sense. There's an possibility they could sell it, but I mean, they're going to put their bid in according to that, so it will change the bid amounts. Um.
But isn't that like any rental situation of any kind?
Yeah.
You have to fall under.
Bidders.
You fall under who.
Usually in Vernon County, you have no trouble if you want to require hay and scripts. You just, you do change who your renter is, but you don't have any trouble finding renters.
Yeah, that's, that's true. It's just going to change your dollar amount. Which they.
It may or may not.
Okay, did you?
And then the other thing is, is that I stopped this gentleman from making a comment before when you were talking, and he may have something more to share.
No, I, I want to agree with Ben. In our neighborhood, three farmers sold their cows in the last fifteen years. All of them wanted to keep strips, contour strips. All of them got top dollar for their rental.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Any more questions? Can we vote? Okay, uh, you wanted a roll call vote?
Here, you have to call it.
Well, it can't be.
One. Just pick one.
That's terrible.
Fandrum.
Stop, pick one. All right, Ollie.
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Barry Ringy.
Yes, but I'm not sure of these amounts.
Barry Meenstrup?
No.
And Allison?
Yes.
Yeah, you voted.
Yes, you did.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Motion to dismiss Ollie? Hey, seconded by Mary. Oh, did we? Okay, all in favor of Ollie leaving? Say aye.
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 Good.
I will honestly tell you, I don't like it. Because I think you're really limiting.
I think it's a compromise, and it's far away from what we first started from.
Yeah.
But it's a compromise, and I'm all about compromises, so.
He's the first. I think you're going to limit her.
That's okay, though. I don't.
We had like a five acre.
She got that, she got that if we limited, that's okay.
So that'll go.
Wanted.
There's always a rough acre, just, you can pull out.
Okay.
In five years, it can evolve into gra, intensive grazing.
I like the forest idea, but, you know.
It was the most profitable.
Not my real, not my.
Black walnut was the most profitable, dollar for dollar.
You're too greedy, Mom.
I'm just not wrong.
What about the walnut acres? Acres if they buy us. Do you think they're ever going to make any money?
Only thing is.
The firewood.
Yeah, firewood. And what about the other one? Because nobody's taking care of it. It is very intense.
And have it.
You have to take care of it. And the other one is now.
Okay, what is left? What if, what if?
What's left to do here today?
The best way to get in the lease would be.
Yeah.
All moments.
I'll communicate, uh, the motion that was made, Nikki, so she can start drafting the necessary modifications to the lease agreement. Sounds like you may have some modifications of your own now that we know.
Suggestions to be considered.
Yes. So if you could either share those with me, and I'll pass them on to Nikki, or you can share them with Nikki directly. And then we'll get you and Nikki together to talk about, you know, the, the best management practices, the conservation practices that we want written into the contract. Does that sound fair? Anything I'm?
Just can the timeframe be clear, because I want to make sure I respect the timeframe that I agreed to and that the committee asked. And I do, because I do really want to make sure I respect that and, you know, and prioritize it in a timely manner. Like, to be honest, how was I supposed to know this meeting was happening? I mean, like, I checked the calendar a lot, but like, I didn't really even know this meeting was happening until the department had meeting yesterday.
It was on the website.
Well, I know, I know, but you don't really meetings are on the website.
I told them.
That was on me then too, because when I went to pull up this team's meeting, I didn't even have it in my calendar as a meeting invite. I. So.
And I'm not trying to blame anyone. I just want to make sure that I deliver what I say I'm going to deliver. I feel horrible if I ever don't, you know, it's important to me that I meet any deadlines that I'm committing to.
Okay, so what kind of timeframe are we looking to have all of that ready in draft form for the committee to reveal? Our next meeting is.
Well, that's pretty quick.
It's pretty quick, yeah.
Maybe no members meeting.
No, it'll be.
Because we're, we're talking on October fourth.
Yeah.
But whatever in this contract, I want to make sure that it is followed through.
Well, I think speaking to Nikki about enforcement provisions are going to have to be.
Or we wouldn't have.
And who's rolling from.
I, I mean, so I'm okay being both, like, or shell or a combination of Phil and I.
So.
Water.
How does the committee?
Other than this year.
Feel, okay, our next, our next general government normal.
Oh, yeah, and we've had three of them in ten years.
What'd you say?
Oh, I'm, I'm trying.
You know.
Hey, Mary, Mary, Bert, our next general government normal meeting is October fourth. I think that's too quick for a turnaround. Unless the committee tells me differently, then it could be November first.
Like.
Well, we've got other stuff to meet on, you know, our next general government, but if you want the farm contract for November first.
That's what I'm thinking.
Farm contract, November first.
Because I feel like that's too soon. Do it by October fourth.
The modifications or where we're at on those on October? So, you know, because we don't want to leave all that till November.
I think from now until then, you should be looking at the, the lease agreement and talking about changes and either getting those to Cassie so that when we come.
We can't say I want this change if the whole committee doesn't agree with it.
Well, we can bring a draft of changes. How do you suggest that? Like, it would seem feasible to be able to review a lease and say, I mean, we already added some today.
Well, and Mary had some ideas until we do which.
And so Nikki will bring the draft on November first, so we have something to look at.
Well, there can be things for consideration that it can be shared, but then also some things may be dictated by when can they do, um, when can they lay out the strips again? And how soon can that be done? And how, when will the, you know, when that will the strips, the, the forage?
Waterways.
Yeah, the waterways. When can that be done and, and, um, planted so that it can work for next year? So there are some things that are going to dictate what can go in there anyway.
So I'm asking the committee, how do you want to lay that out? We, I'm just saying, we have a, you know, that we have an October fourth gen gov meeting, and we have a November first gen gov meeting. You can add it to any agenda. I'm just asking how you want to do it.
Well, why don't we put it October meeting?
What are we putting on?
That, you know, some of the things we might want to talk about yet.
Consideration.
Considerations.
You know, and vote on it in action item in November.
Consider the October meeting as kind of a working session for it, where we don't plan to adopt anything, but, you know, direct maybe and discuss some changes for Nikki.
I think that's an excellent suggestion. That would allow for some discussion.
Yes, if we don't do that, we'll be doing that in November.
Okay.
If we don't have ideas to discuss, November is going to be a blank. So if everybody, I know it's short notice, but if everybody had wanted the input, gathered their thoughts for the October fourth meeting,
Mm-hmm.
beat the horse there, kind of get some parameters, send that to Nikki for draft. November first, we'd have a.
A hopefully.
Hopefully valid.
Document.
Um, contract to put out that you could vote on or amend at that meeting, potentially.
That's why, that's great. So, um, you have been together here on this for an hour and a half, which is amazing. My question is, do we need to plan for a longer October fourth meeting?
Well, I think now that you know what direction and option that you're going to, I mean, a lot of that got hashed out today, just talking about which option.
I agree.
Now you know which option it is, and then you've already talked about some of those things that you want in that contract. It's more clarified what it is.
I'm going to rephrase that. General Government Committee, I believe we're going to have a pretty big meeting.
We almost.
In October, so be prepared, we may have to split to two.
We're in a meeting next week.
No, no, not next week, the week after.
The one week you don't have a holy smokes, the general gov done a lot.
He's not on Wednesday, uh, Wednesday, the twenty-seventh is our union negotiation.
As far as I'm concerned.
I can't say, I have.
Oh, shit.
I can't say that.
Okay.
So. I have to travel. But, so I'm just gen gov, now I'm just committee. Uh, I would plan on Tuesday, the third, if we can, and Wednesday, the fourth, like we've done before, because I think we're going to have, need time for. If I'm wrong, once agenda comes out, I'll let you know.
We're probably not wrong.
So which one is a farm?
We'll do that on our normal day.
The fourth?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
General Gov, third, or Tuesday, the third?
That's just in, if the, if the, um, that's our backup plan, if our agenda gets really huge.